Okay, we are recording at seven o'clock. A call us to order. Thank you all for being here. Let me read the governor's statement as quickly as I can because we've heard it all before. Okay, this is a meeting of the Knowing Zoning Commission will take place through Zoom remote meeting technology. My name is Rick Smith. I'm chairman of the commission. The host of the meeting is Larry Dunn, who was an alternate zoning commission member. So he'll manage the document flow. Participants in this meeting will be the commission members, elected alternates, staff and the commission's council if they join. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time they speak. However, that's limited to commissioners and alternates. Participants who would like to comment on an item or share a screen item should indicate such by using the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen or by raising your hand in front of the screen so I can see you. After that, participant will be recognized to have the opportunity to speak. Participants should mute their microphones until called upon. You don't really need to do that unless we get a lot of background noise. It's much more efficient to just leave them on. To vote on a motion will be called on individually unless I can see your hands waving. Members of the public who have logged on or called in will be observing the meeting, but there will be no public comment. This was a confusing point at the last meeting, but this is a business meeting of the commission for the commission to develop its thoughts and ideas on this issue. At some time down the road, we will have a public meeting or a public hearing and solicit public comment at that time. Members of the public can submit comments by writing to the commission after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed. The commission's email address is nfdzoning@gmail.com. And finally, a recording of tonight's meeting will be posted on the town of Groton's website within seven days of the meeting. In that way, if you weren't able to sit in tonight, or you want to remind yourself of what was said, you can go back and see literal view the end of the entire digital recording. So that is the governor's statement for that piece of boilerplate. I will identify commission members and those who are sitting in as alternates. For the record, wave your hand when I identify you. Art Tanner. Okay, Blake Powell. Beth Steele. Okay, I'm Rick Smith. I'm chairman and Lynn Marshall with you. Lynn is an alternate, an elected alternate member, and she is sitting in for Dana Oviat, who's a member and is absent tonight. So those are your five commissioners of record for tonight. Larry Dunn is the other alternate. And by longstanding agreement, the alternates participate in our debates, but do not vote. So that is that. Okay. So the sole agenda item tonight is to continue discussion of options and management measures to to deal with the issues in front of us. I sent out a list of my proposed order of addressing these things. Is there any disagreement with that list? Or we'll start in with item number one. Seeing none. Okay. If you go to the large matrix, the one that's titled comparisons, October 24th, 2020, and Larry will put here it is. The first item to discuss is parking spaces per bedroom. We blow that up a little, Larry.
Yep, any second here. How's that?
Well, that's much better. Thank you. And if we can get rid of that pain on the side.
Says, how do you do that?
I don't know.
I've tried to like.
Oh, all right. Okay, it's just we can't read all the text.
Hold on, there you go.
Oh, that's better. Okay. All right. Let me see. All right. So that is the issue. And that was to remind me, I think we'd be more effective in organizing our thoughts and coming to a decision if we start the discussion with a motion, someone want to make a motion that suggests how we deal with this issue. And then we can debate the motion instead of just brainstorming and talking and then decide if we have something to decide on. So is there a motion? Beth?
I'll just throw it out there. I would motion that short term rental operator be allowed to street parking places per rental, not per bedroom, just per the whole house rent.
So S T R operator allowed two parking spaces per house?
Yes.
Per dwelling unit. So implicitly without regard to the number of bedrooms. Okay. And would those be off street? That's what we had talked about the last time, but.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yes, they would be.
All right. Let me see if I get a second first, not get ahead of myself before I ask questions. Is there a second to that motion? Is the second.
What's the motion? Is it for off street or on street? I'm confused now.
Wait a minute. Here we go again. Pardon me while I have technical difficulties. I can't see Lynn. I get five people and that's it.
Go to full matrix.
Yeah, I had to put her in the the big view. Okay. Okay. Is there a second to this first? Niff, okay.
Yeah, I can make a point. I'm seconding it so that it gets discussion.
Okay. Right. That's okay. Seconded isn't necessarily showing his his views when he seconds, he gets it open for debate. So that's fine. Okay, Lynn, you had a question?
Yes, I'm not sure where the motion ended up. Was it was that on street parking or off street? It wasn't, it seemed like you were saying something different than what Beth said.
No, she said she thought about it a minute and said, yes, off street.
Okay, okay.
Okay, debate on the motion. And I have some views that Bill had offered. I did not put them up on the screen because that would have violated those rules on having documents available for meetings on the website. If you want, I can read those now. So you get a flavor for his advice. Paul, that's one of the things we kept asking about. How did he feel about these? So if there's no objection, let me read those first and then we'll start in on questions. Okay. Two sets of comments. The first one, he said parking should be addressed upfront. In my view, we need a regulation, as you know, on street parking is limited in the village. Each short term rental in my view should be supported by off street parking on each parcel occupied by an S T R. If you don't plan and require parking for the worst case, you will have substantial parking problems. The first fraternity party rental will expose the parking issues. That was comment number one. I asked for clarification at times and and the question of the bedrooms typically parking for residential use is based on the number of bedrooms. However, one can always use fold out beds in living rooms and basements that are not usually not counted. The third one was I the idea about cars jamming into a yard is a valid one. They'll park on the grass, turning it to dirt, mud and blight. You may have to link occupancy to the size of the building, thus addressing onsite parking. Excessive parking can generate parking issues and noise, the density and limited in village parking generated additional problems. Okay. And the last one two were well, one. I had asked when he said the building size, I said, does that also, could you use bedrooms as a number? He says normally parking requirements for residential units are based on the number of bedrooms. Here we require two onsite parking spaces for a single family or two family dwelling. Multi-family is factored one and a half. One and one half parking spaces per bedroom. In some cases, we require an additional guest space for every three dwelling units. So if a dwelling is owner occupied, you would want to account in my view for two spaces plus spaces for the guest. Either one per bedroom or one and a half or two. The parking requirements might encourage homeowners to want to pave over their lawns to accommodate onsite parking. You may want therefore to have a maximum on the number of spaces allowed to prevent this. So there are some ideas in there that are consistent with Beth's motion. And there are also things in there that are consistent with the way Niff had explained his view on the parking spaces per bedrooms. So that's a little wordy, but that was Bill's advice, which is what we asked him for. Okay, the motion on the floor says short term rentals operator is allowed two parking spaces per dwelling unit off street. And it's seconded. So discussion on that motion. Blake and then Larry.
So we still have a stated objective to make sure that whatever regulations you don't contribute to congestion, traffic congestion, right? So I just don't see how allowing off street parking generically does that. I'm all for saying you can add two off street parking as long as it doesn't cause congestion, but there's no way to enforce it other than ensuring that it's in the person's permit. Exactly where those off street parking places are. And if that's deemed that doesn't cause congestion, then I'm okay with it. But how do you do that? But just to say that someone could have off street parking because they don't have or odd street parking, just because they don't have enough off street parking, I think causes a lot of problems.
There's a point of clarification. I I thought the motion that I made, but I could be wrong, was for two off street parking spots, meaning no parking on the street. You have to provide it on site.
Okay, I missed. I thought Rick had said the other way around when he was.
And I apologize, but that's what I meant. I wasn't clear.
That's what I thought you said. So I must have said something in error to get Blake thinking I had a different view. It's two parking spots per dwelling off street. Right?
And that's it.
Okay. Other questions? Larry?
More clarification. So is that in addition to the owner occupied slots? Or is that total? My assumption was it's in addition to the owner occupied slots.
I would say yes, because the whole.
Yeah, I mean, but it would, I think we would need to expand the motion or amend the motion to clarify that. And then the second point is it may show up someplace else, but violation of this would be suspension of his license entirely. I mean, to Blake's point about what's the enforcement mechanism? I don't know if that needs to be in the motion or that later on in the enforcement section is it's clear that if that violated because there's congestion in the street or something else, that would constitute a suspension of license after the process has been followed.
Yeah.
Those are my two columns.
Yeah, I think the enforcement thing, yes, we'll collectively look at all of those and and I mean, we're we may have to go through these and and say which one gets heavy enforcement attention and which one doesn't. But I would hope we simply say, you know, we have our rules and there are penalties for the rules, usually starting with a season desist order. But let's cross that bridge when we come to it. Others? Nip? Oh, Lynn, you had a question and I don't think I got you after we clarified motion. I did. Okay. Nip?
I raised this point at the last meeting because it was an item that required some thought and deliberation in the decision making. When we drafted the regulations, we took to a public hearing. And it arose out of the fact that if you're renting a house with four or five bedrooms and it's an extended family, for example, if it were my extended family, you know, my wife and I and our three kids were lived somewhere else, but we decided to all come to to know each together. And we were going to fill up this four or five bedroom house. We would come with four cars. You know, one for us and one for each of our our kids and their kids. And so it seems logical to me that there ought to be some ratio between the number of parking spaces required off street and the number of bedrooms available for rent. And I was a little puzzled at the last meeting that the some commission members seem to be struggling with this concept in that in section nine of our regulations, we have multiple, we have a whole list of parking requirements for various activities. And the number of parking spaces required is tied to some measurement of the activity. It's the square footage. It's the number of people in the top one, which is dwelling. It's you know, a minimum of two for single family house. For a rooming house, it's one per bedroom. You know, for restaurants, it's so many parking places for each square feet of for so many square feet of the restaurant. And for those of you who had the pleasure of working our way through the Ford's application, you may remember that the number of seats in the restaurant was determined by the number of parking spaces that Ford was able to craft on their property. So to me, it's completely consistent with our regulations and completely logical that we would have some ratio between the number of spaces that are required and the size of the the rental property, number of bedrooms in the rental property. I mentioned that there had been such a ratio in the earlier proposed regulations and Rick kindly dug it up and inserted it into the materials that we've been looking at since then. I'm not married to that particular ratio. If we think there's some other ratio that makes more sense, that's fine. I'm happy to discuss that. But the main point is that it's number of parking spaces is a variable based on the number of bedrooms because the number of cars that are going to be required to transport the people to occupy the bedrooms is a significant issue for us.
Okay, thanks. My view is last meeting, I was not really enamored of the language that you see in the green bar in the middle of this row. But after getting Bill's views and thinking about it more after hearing on listening to the record, hearing Nip's explanation of it, I actually prefer that language more than the main motion for that very reason, because some houses have four bedrooms and some have two and it's as Nip has pointed out, I won't repeat everything he said, but it's very consistent with how zoning is done according to John and to Bill. So I would almost see if there was a desire to either have a substitute motion or have Beth accept that language as a substitute motion for her motion. They're very similar in logic and the way they work, but the language on the screen gives you that opportunity. If it's a large house, you can have more than two cars. So is there?
Added to my motion. I kind of just threw it out there.
Okay, so you would accept that as a substitute?
Yeah.
Okay, the second are agreed? That was you, Nip? You do? Okay. So let's just make sure I get the parliamentary thing first. So the new main motion is that language that Larry just highlighted. You'll put that over in the decision column and we can read it that way. There you go. Okay, so that's the new main motion. Blake, you were first and then.
Yeah, so I think there's one point they were missing. And so in the case of Ford, it's all different because they were approving a special permit and get tied to parking spaces and other things. The way our current regulations are, it only says how many parking spaces you have to have based on number of bedrooms. They say you have to use them. And so we need more than just to say if you have X number of bedrooms, you have to have X number of parking, off street parking spaces. There's nothing preventing anybody from parking in the street. And if the goal is to prevent street congestion, that's what we need. And in particular, if you have a long skinny driveway, you know, people don't want to be the first in and the last out. They park on the street. It happens all the time. There's a case right on Pearl Street where someone parks their truck in a trailer on the street in front of the neighbor's house. And the neighbors complained about it and they said, there's nothing you can do about it. And they're right. Because they have off street parking, they just choose not to use it.
Yep.
My point really.
I'm sorry, Lynn first. Wait, Blake finish?
Yeah, I just finished up. My point really was that I think as part of the permit process, it's important that they identify exactly where the parking is. And if it's off street, that's great. But I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to on street parking as long as it's not causing congestion. But they would have to park where their permit says they're going to park.
I want to make sure we're under the the same logic here. We had some other language on parking. And and I don't see this as a substitution for that. I see it as an add on, but now I'm trying to find it and make sure it didn't get dropped. Because it had that language about the applicant has to show in his application materials where the parking will be and because we we passed that as a motion. No, it's right above. Right above that row. Parking off street applicant must show parking locations and advertise limitations. We approved that in September. So that's part of what you're saying, Blake.
Well, that's a little bit contrary to the motion that's on the floor. That's what I'm just saying. There's two two aspects to it.
The thing in green adds the ratio. Everything else is consistent. And the thing in green clarifies that yes, this is in addition to owners spaces. Right. Lynn and Nip?
I think I'm approaching this from the point of view of what can we actually enforce? And we can enforce that you have enough onsite parking in the application process. And we're doing that with commercial businesses, with home occupations. And as John and Bill have said, that would be reasonable to require for short term rentals as well. We can require that the advertisement that that's in the on the on the sites, the rental sites, state the number of parking spaces available onsite. And at least for the village of the village district state that street parking is limited. We can enforce that, that that be on that on their rental site. And maybe in the in the book as well, I think probably should be in their in their book to their customers. We can revoke or not renew a permit if there are a lot of complaints about parking associated with a particular short term rental. In order to do that, we need some language under probably what you've called unruly behavior. It probably is a better word for that. But a general statement about that, and so that we could then say, yes, this is what's occurring and and this isn't acceptable. And I know we've talked a lot about and we've seriously considered whether street parking should be allowed to make up for not having enough onsite parking lots as long as it doesn't cause congestion in the streets. And that that would be part of the application parking plan. I think that's very problematic when I thought about it, when you get down into the nitty gritty of how this would work. So let's say, you know, you have several adjacent houses that are vying for the same on street parking places. And how is Bill Mahalan supposed to allocate those? Who gets them?
But Lynn, that's not a part of the motion.
Okay, but but I'm just trying to say the if we're looking at the overall picture and what we do. And you know, and how can somebody claim something is their spot when it's when it's it's actually public property? They can't, we can't enforce that. And it could easily create the notion of ownership of something that's public property. That's my spot. You get out of it. So I think even thinking about going in that direction is is way really problematic. So I think we need to focus on this onsite parking.
Nick, if you would, I'd like to jump in with an idea of how to make better decisions. And if I could put language up there, we had this debate last meeting. It was, the whole meeting was disorganized. I'm not complaining about what Lynn just said, but I I wrote it up so you could read the language. And maybe that will satisfy a lot of these concerns. So if we could put that up, or if you'd like to speak first, fine, but then we'll put the language up.
I'd like to respond to some of the assumptions that I'm hearing from some of the other members. If you were to, if the commission members were to go and read section nine of our existing regulations, in particular, section 9.4, the purpose of this regulation, and for the purposes regularly, an off street parking space is a surfaced area, meaning the approval of the commission and it measures nine feet by 20 feet. How to measure it? The required area is to be exclusive of driveways and shall be permanently reserved for the per temporary parking of one automobile and should be connected with the street or public right way through a right away or a service driveway. So these parking spaces are not the driveway. These are in addition to the driveway. That's our regular existing regulations. We say it's off street parking unless we're going to write a whole new paragraph about what we mean by off street parking for short term rentals. It's already specified in our existing regulations.
Okay, good. Thanks. Larry, can you toggle over to that document?
Yep.
Okay. If you read this language, this was a consequence of the debate we had on October 20th. There is one omission here. It's in paragraph C, reserved for further deliberation. That was drafted and put on the website prior to knowing that Nip would be involved and that Dana would say he was okay with us discussing this tonight. That language that was reserved is what you just read in green that has become the main motion. So read this. I think it's going to satisfy a lot of Lynn's concerns. So just want to read through that and see if it gives you a better sense of how the whole thing would work out, both in application period and the purpose, which is up there in sentence number one.
So but in this one, it just it basically is kind of loosey goosey in that you you're strongly encouraging off street parking, but it basically is kind of loosey-goosey in that you you're strongly encouraging off-street parking, but that means that parking on the street is also allowed.
I agree, and I argued for required and didn't sense that I got a a majority. So that would be one thing I would want to discuss also, but the overall concept of how the parking rule would work is that does anybody have a problem with that, including that language in blue? That's the main motion for paragraph C. Larry?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there a conflict between the the language proposed for C? And B? I'm just trying to think through the logic. I I think there's a conflict there.
Well, that's all the sole discretion of the zoning officer.
Yeah.
And that's really um.
Let's you insert the word maximum in that. In other words, you're yeah.
That's that's really, that paragraph, that sentence to me says if the applicant show applicant can't show the zoning officer where he's gonna have his parking off the street, then he doesn't get a permit. So I don't I don't see that as a conflict, and I don't see it as a an opportunity to park on the street. If we change those words from strongly encouraged to require.
Well, it the the enforceability of that is strange, but if if you say that maximum allowed is the language in green.
Yeah.
Then that's tempered by B, then I think it fits, that you know, I mean, which which comes first? So the maximum allowed or the spaces, but in the sole discretion of the enforcement officer, if where you're showing where those are could cause congestion, then he could deny it. So maybe I I if he if those got flipped, it's kind of a an ordered.
Well, I could do that, but the way they're the way they're listed, all four apply. So whether the order is changed or not, all four provisions are would be rules. So I don't mind changing the order.
Okay, alright, I was just trying to get it in my head.
I guess I want to make sure the decision should be based on the motion on the other document that is in in blue or green. Um, this is just to show you how it would all fit and to satisfy some of the concerns that Lynn had. So again, getting back to the main motion, is there any further comment on the main motion in the context of the way this is set out? Uh, then Larry, could we toggle back the other way?
Alright, hold on. I have that. We'll find it again. Where did it go? Whoop, went on my other screen. Hold on, I gotta go. Go get my mouse and drag it back.
Same computers.
Bang. Okay, alright, I got it back. And that bring it up? That didn't bring it up. Alright, there you go.
Alright. Okay, so we're back to that as the motion. Any more discussion on the motion?
What was it modified to?
I'm sorry, say that again, Blake?
What went the motion modified slightly?
I don't believe so. We lifted it from off to the left and put it here, but we didn't change any words.
Off off-street was inserted.
Oh, okay. To be consistent with the original motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, important catch, thank you. Um, so that is a, Beth, you agree with that change? Because you had it in your first motion, off-street? Yeah, okay. Um, and Nip has a good point there, too. I mean, remember um, this all doesn't supersede what's already in our regulations. So his point about the driveway parking, technically, I mean, probably people violate that all the time in knowing, but technically, the existing parking rule for a house sets out where you can park. So. Um, okay, if there's no other debate on the motion, all those in favor, raise your, uh, let me read it for the record. Uh, usually seems like a good idea. Uh, the motion is one off-street parking space per bedroom for the first two bedrooms and one off-street space for every two bedrooms after that. If owner occupied, the parking spaces are in addition to the spaces required for the owner's family. Okay, that's the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that's five. Alright. Alright, that's that issue. Um, next one is apartments. Apartments, uh, Nip?
Yeah, related to the parking, uh, you know, you showed the other language uh, where it says uh, off-street is strongly recommended.
Yeah.
I I make a motion that that language be modified to read required.
Yeah, it will be, because once I edit that document, the yellow highlighted text, it'll reflect this motion.
Okay.
Okay, it'll say off-street parking. It'll say required instead of strongly encouraged.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, apartments, uh, this issue is should they be allowed as short-term rentals or should they not? And is there a motion on that subject? Yep.
I'm moved that apartment residential units should not be eligible for short-term rentals.
Is there a second? I see a second.
Second.
Uh, Len, second. Okay, debate on the motion. Uh, Nip?
Nick Tanner. You know, we've discussed the the reason that some of us think that such a regulation is a good idea, specifically to try and increase or preserve the housing stock for long-term rentals, which we think are those of us who support this idea believe that that is preferable to short-term rentals in terms of preserving the residential character of the village. And also in terms of providing some diversity of the the long-term residents within the the village, that the the folks who occupy the short-term rentals, long-term. I found out a few days ago that one of my nearby neighbors has actually been occupying an apartment next door to our house for seventeen years, and I've seen her around the village a lot and so forth, so. Not the same as if she owned the place, but it's a lot better than the turnover that a short-term rental would uh, generate in the same space. I, when we talked about it at the last meeting, I had some the impression that some commission members were concerned about us trying to impose uh, a value judgment on which kind of occupant of an apartment is more desirable. But from my view, all of zoning exercises those kinds of of judgments, you know, minimum lot sizes, housing sizes, heights of buildings, um, how big a detached accessory building you can have, et cetera, et cetera. All of those uh, regulations impose restrictions on the freedom of the property owners to do whatever they want. And I I think if we were to go down this path, I think it's fairly easy to explain the reason for doing it. And it doesn't mean everybody's gonna agree with it, but my impression from John Casey's uh, advice to us has been the important thing is to have a reasonable explanation for why you imposed whatever restrictions you impose. And I think it's, to me, it's fairly clear why we would want to do this if we choose to do this.
Okay, anybody else? Lynn?
Yes, so I I think what we were trying to do with if if we're going to say that we're not allowing apartments to be used. And it was for one of our goals, discouraging the replacement of permanently occupied residences or long-term rental properties by short-term rentals, and that apartments were the ones that were the most concerned, our supply of them is so small. And the people that are living in those apartments, a lot of them are contributing greatly to our community. Um, different ages, different types of people, but they they provide a diversity to our community that's very rich and good and fun and just uh, great. But anyway. So what's happened in other communities is because some owners realize they can get more money from short-term rentals than they can from long-term rentals, they're the units are converted to short-term rentals for monetary reasons, and then and then there's a shortage of them. However, right now, with the way the limits are on the number of rentals, that is, that is severely renting how the the amount of short-term rental activity. So I don't think that that would be, that that would be more economically uh, advantageous to have short-term rentals instead of long-term rentals. I also heard what Blake said at the last meeting. And he said, well, what about the people that keep an apartment basically because they have a family that comes, so they've got the apartment, it means a longstanding apartment or whatever. But they keep that for when their family comes, but when the family's not there, well, then they can, they'll rent it out. So I'm just a short-term rental. In fact, I think we may have had a letter from someone in knowing who does that very same thing. And so so Mike, as long as we have the restrictions on the amount of short-term rental activity, I am not so adamant that we have that we that we say that there can be no short-term rentals of apartments. As soon as that, if that were to change um, and there were to be more rental activity allowed, then I would be very much wanting to exclude apartments from that.
Well, before Nip goes, he had his hand up, but writing these regulations, you have to do what you think is right first, because you can't then uh, change things a little bit down the road. You've created a whole pool of people who are pre-existing non-conforming uses or pre-existing uses now, and they get to do it by the old rules.
Yeah, you can't change what's already, you could do new, new conversion.
Let's not design a system that
Right.
says we're gonna change a regulation when the the housing market and the rental markets change because of COVID or anything else. We we gotta set rules. In fact, John has pointed out to me you know, zoning normally, they set a few standards and then they walk away from it. There's no administration and enforcement to speak of a little bit, but largely the system behaves based on those few standards you set. And if you have something a lot more complicated with a lot of moving parts and a lot of things that you have to administer and play with, that's a townwide ordinance, not a zoning ordinance. And they're, you know, he's talked to us before about the two different things. He recommended we do this by zoning ordinance. So I I think that would that would be a lead balloon to have a dynamic regulation process that we adjust as conditions change. I'm sorry, that was too long-winded and I did get in the way, Nip. Nip, you had your hand up, so.
I I I meant not not that, I meant as as we are, as we are not not as we are working on the regulations right now, not down the road.
Oh.
But you've got a good point about that could change down the road, and then you've already locked into this other thing, so thanks for reminding me of that.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, alright, Nip?
Yeah, Nick Tanner. I'd point out that what we're talking about is short-term rentals, which are thirty days or less. And to say that apartments uh, be excluded from that category doesn't mean that somebody who's got a garage apartment and wants to have it available for their kids to come at Christmas or for a month during the summer couldn't rent it for longer periods other than the ones that they want to protect for their kids. Um, I happen to know from personal experience that there's a lot of rentals going on over at Grotton Long Point this year from people who have temporarily relocated from wherever they came from and are occupying those places for the winter. Come next summer, they'll go back into, you know, the the normal rental mode in Grotton Long Point. But what that proves is there is a rental market that isn't either twelve months or less than thirty days. And for somebody who's got the garage apartment that Blake's talking about, there are other, there are options for them.
Okay, others? Yeah, okay, my view. I, this makes me queasy because it's literally it's got a great motivation, but you're telling somebody with a couple of rooms and a bathroom that they can do something and you take telling somebody with a couple of rooms and a bathroom and a kitchen that they can't. And I am, believe me, I buy the motivation argument about you know, the goodness of the community and how long-term renters contribute. It makes me queasy to propose using a zoning regulation to do that. Not being a lawyer, I just listened to the words about equal protection and rational basis, and I scratched my head on this one and say, how can how can we make that case? Now, having said that, Nip and Lynn are pretty passionate about this, and like I say, I don't disagree with the motivation. The only way I could vote for this would be with the full knowledge that when we discuss it with John Casey, the first time he says, oh, that's gonna cause you a problem with equal protection, my support would evaporate in an instant. And I think that's what's gonna happen. I don't know. It just, I can't see the rationale for telling an owner of one kind of property and an owner of another kind of property, and they're all hosted and everything else is kind of the same. And you know, we've decided you can do this and you can't, because we want to have long-term renters in knowing. I don't know if that's a good enough reason, but I don't know the answer to that either, so I guess I'm kind of leaning towards saying, alright, let's put it in there and wait for the legal review. Yep?
Yeah, in terms of the 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 equal protection, I I think the the trick there is that you treat everybody who is identical the same. And in this case, we're talking about an apartment, which is different from two bedrooms and a bathroom. And I'm not even sure in the example that Blake cited, whether that quote garage apartment is really an apartment. You know, if it is, why was it created that way? But I I don't know that, but
Probably not.
The main, the main thing, my main point is that the if we are going to, what I'm proposing is everybody who has an apartment, which is two bedrooms and a bathroom and a kitchen, gets treated the same. The fact that there are other The fact that there are other accommodations that are similar, but are not technically apartments are treated differently. That's okay. They're not the same.
Okay, be prepared to write that up as a justification because I'm sure we're going to need it. And all of us should be writing down reasons for why they want to do what they want to do. Because that's going to be a healthy discussion a couple of months from now. Trying to explain these things. And that, that's a good reason. I mean, the essence is you got a pool of properties that are all the same kind of properties. We're treating them all the same. This kind of property is different. Maybe they don't have a kitchen. They're a different group. That's fine. I don't know if I buy the argument, but it's a good, it's a good justification. So write it up and keep track of it. Okay. Everybody else? Anybody else? Blake?
Just, I, I mean, I agree with Lynn's point though, that the premise of all this is based on there's a limitation on the total number of days or nights that a place can be rented. If that's, if people feel that that's restrictive enough, I think you could control this issue strictly that way. A little more swayed by Nip's last argument there about, you know, all people, all, all properties that have an apartment be treated equally. That, that's a little bit better, but but I don't think you need to do this. I, I, I think if it's strictly limited by or controlled by the limited number of nights, I, I think that would achieve the same point that Nip and Lynn are talking about achieving. Because I'm not too sure that, you know, anything between thirty and one year rental, like what Nip says, says is going on in Groton Long Point really achieves what the objective is.
Okay, yep. Did you have your hand up?
I did, but I'll, I'll pass if we're going to go to a vote.
All right, anybody else on this? Okay, so the motion would be apartments should not be eligible for rental as short-term rental units. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay, three to two, the eyes have it. Okay. All right, next item is the permit transfer exemption. If you recall, this was the point under debate last meeting. And it started out as family transfers. There was some discussion and, and concern that it's hard to identify all family members. And if you're too narrow, a lot of people can be left out. Beth had suggested a concept that I had to continue looking up to make sure I understood it. And I think I have it now, but an arms-length transaction is something that something of value was offered for. And a transaction that's not an arms-length transaction, nothing of value is offered. And that would be more like a family transfer. You know, where you giving it off to your kids or something like that. Is that fair, Beth, first before I go further? Yeah. So that, the arms-length transfer gets out of the box that too narrow a definition of a family member would give us. And if you remember, the exemption was so that the longstanding family home could be passed down through the generations type of thing. Or more broadly to a family member when the owners were ready to move on to something else. So there's a family approach, there's an arms-length approach. And the other thing we discussed in October twentieth meeting is is this still really necessary? So that's teeing it up just to see the debate. And how do you feel about this one? And does anybody have a motion first or would because it's a little complicated, you'd rather talk about it a little first? I'd prefer the motion. Lynn?
Just, just for, for clarification. So arms-length would be like, like you, you're gifting it to someone or it's in a will passing that way. There's, you're not buying it. Is that, is that correct?
Okay, yeah, I think so. Beth is nodding. So yeah, that's, that's my understanding of it.
Also include if you transferred your property to an LLC or a trust, you're not doing it for any consideration, you're simply changing the form of ownership. And again, I don't, I threw that out there. I'm not necessarily wedded to the idea. I just kind of threw it out there for discussion at the end because I was reviewing when since the last meeting, I was reviewing where I had thought I had seen something similar in the Shelter Island regulations. And then when I looked back at those regulations, I realized that those regulations actually say that a vacation rental license may not be transferred, assigned or passed through an estate. It does not authorize any person other than the person named therein to permit or arrange vacation rentals on the licensed property. So there, how they, not saying that we have to approach it the same way, but their approach was not as I had recalled it. It was like the exact opposite.
Good, yep.
And thinking about those questions since the last meeting, I don't remember who raised the point, but given that we appear to be headed down the path of crafting regulations that allow anybody who wants to operate a short-term rental within the parameters of our regulations to do so, why we even need to address this topic, which is, you know, getting a little complicated and a little convoluted. If somebody sells their house to their son for a dollar or puts it in trust or whatever, what do we care? Anybody under our discussion up to this point, anybody who wants to have, to operate a short-term rental within the parameters of the regulation is going to be allowed to do it. Why?
Yeah.
This, uh, legal mumbo jumbo.
Well, there is one reason why. That's the waiting period. If a person owns a house, he's owned it for twenty years and he decides he's going to give it to his son. And permits are non-transferable, the son has to go in and apply for a new trans, a new permit. And if there's not an exemption for that son, then he's got to wait three years before he can start doing short-term rentals.
Well, then I would suggest that the exemption be spelled out in the waiting period, not here where it's not clear that that's the purpose of this exemption.
Well, I left it here only as a kind of a placeholder. There were a lot more things that applied here, but we've taken them off the table as we've gone down the road. I don't mind putting it there if everybody thinks it, it fits better. That's the only measure I can think of that you might want to have an exemption from your permit transfer. Does everybody think that's a better way to go with this? Just rewrite the waiting period to all right? Any, no disagreement? Okay. Okay. All right, so it's a consensus that we had no motion, but I don't see any disagreement. So we'll move on from that one. Okay, next item is information to renters. So we're going to need that other document. Again, Larry?
I need to sign off here.
Oh, that's right. Blake has to leave at eight. Thank you for attending. That means Larry will be seated for Blake Powell as an alternate. So the voting members are now Art Tanner, Beth Steele, myself, Lynn Marshall, and Larry Dunn.
Rick, I'm going to bail out also.
You are? Okay. Well, we still have a forum, so.
Yes, I, I have every faith in you.
Be careful of what you ask for. Okay, thank you for attending. Okay, this is information to renters. And I wanted to have the language up because we could never debate something like this and understand what everybody else means. I don't care what we decide on or how the words are said, but as a model, I wanted to have something that everybody could read. So you might want to read down that a minute if you haven't had a time already. It's been on the website since Feb, uh, Friday. Hey Larry, I'm having a hard time moving that the whole pane. Oh, now I got it. Okay, well. I sort of have it. There we go. Okay. Yeah, this is not responding how I'd like it to. Because I Okay. All right. All right, have you read that? Everybody read that? Okay, any comments on it? For, to follow my own rule, I would offer this language under item sixteen as the content of the subject on information to renters. I would make that as a motion. Okay, motion made by me, seconded by Beth, language at sixteen. Okay, any any discussion on the motion? Lynn?
I think overall this is very good. One thing with the floor plan, I think that's a little unusual that you have to post that in all the bedrooms and the common areas. Although I guess it, it, what do you mean by posting? I mean, it doesn't mean it has to be on the wall. It could just be in a little binder or something.
Yeah. Places I've stayed in that they always have things like that. And it's obviously not necessary in a small unit with a lot of doors, but in a, a big building, eight-bedroom, big old house. Well, I was in some in Scotland that were B and Bs, terrified you at the thought of how would I get out of here if it was smoky and the electricity went out and you couldn't turn a light on? No window's big enough to get out. It was a mess. So whether we needed in there or not, I don't know. It just seemed like as long as we're trying to cover all bases here for the safety of the tenant, I honestly don't care if the owners have to prepare some of this information. I'm more concerned with the safety of their renters.
Yeah, as long as posted, didn't mean you had to nail it to the wall.
No.
Okay.
It's been stone.
Then I'm going to bring up a point since, since Blake left us a, a point that he has made earlier. And it's under E, unruly behavior. And so by saying that those things are only not allowed between between nine PM and nine AM, then they are okay at other times is what's implied.
No, it's just those specific things are strongly limited between those hours. And again, it's, it depends on the complaints we get and a public hearing that we have, whether we decide it was such obnoxious behavior at midnight that the person has to lose their permit. We still have up earlier in this document, there's still a paragraph that was the paragraph that Blake liked. The general rule that you're not supposed to be obnoxious anytime. This, again, this is what do you want to tell? Well, it's right above, it's C. That was Blake, Blake liked. He is strict limit. Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Good. Maybe, maybe just calling that something different than unruly, unruly behavior. And I, and maybe, maybe something just calling that quiet hours. I don't know.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll end up wordsmithing this, but
Okay, but that's it.
Okay, perhaps change to quiet hours.
Yeah, I mean, you still need to be specific. Quiet hours is a definitive, but.
Yeah. Well, I mean, Lynn raised, the way she raised the point, I look at number C and say is non-impairment really what we want to say there. That doesn't mean anything unless you know in our zoning regulations, that's what they call it. And that's the words lifted right out of our blue book, which you have to go look at it to see. So I'll look at both of those and see if I can't come up with something else.
Put them together one after the other.
Yeah, yeah, move D and, and all right, Larry?
So somewhere else is you can't have parties or events, that that's a separate doc.
Yes.
Statements.
If you scroll us up to page two, I think it's page two. You'll find it in the management measures. Now, go up some. Go up about another page. No, the other way. No, no, roll it the other way to page two. Well, three now.
Two.
Three. There you go. Requirements and management measures. Events as defined in A eleven are prohibited. I didn't put the definitions in here because I just, I didn't want to clutter it up.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but my point is the, is it worthwhile to reinforce it in the information package? Gets, that's the, that's the point I was making.
Add that events are prohibited. Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right. Okay, anything else added or changed? Okay, motion on the floor is as written on item sixteen with changing the order of the impairment. I'm sorry, non-impairment and unruly behavior items to be sequential and possibly changing the labels, the, the term definition of the two. And to add that events are prohibited. Everybody okay with that? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Are you unanimous? Okay. With changes. All right, next item, individual rooms. This is teed up for Lynn. This has been her issue. It's a couple of items below, I believe. Larry?
Down here.
There, yeah, one, yep, right. Individual room rentals.
I got it.
Yeah, there it is. Okay. All right, read through those for a minute and particularly E, because that's what we spent a lot of time talking about last meeting.
I, I read it, but I was confused by B. I just I feel like it's contradictory and maybe I'm, I'm missing the the minutia here. I when I listen, B says, a short-term rental shall be rented only as a whole unit to one party at any one time and shall not be rented in separate bedrooms to separate parties. But yet, the whole point of this section, or at least A seems to be no more than two rooms may be rented per dwelling plus a shared or private bed. I, I, when I first started reading this, I thought the whole point was to allow rooms to be rented. And then when I got to B, I thought it wasn't. Can you just explain to me, is it, are we, are we, is this section attempting to allow the rental of bedrooms or is it to not allow individual bedrooms to be rented? Because if we're allowing owner occupied people to do short-term rental, then they're going to be renting out a bedroom, not the whole house. They're going to be renting out a separate bedroom to a separate party, which would be in contravention to what B says. So I'm confused.
Okay, I think I know the Okay, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask Lynn if she'd like to discuss it first. This. This was lifted out of her individual plan from July. And she has advocated for it a few times, and I think it's best if she discusses it first. It may be that B is not necessary, but I didn't want to take it out without a fuller understanding, so I left it in so we could talk about it.
Yeah, so, so that. It means that you can, to one party, you can rent one or two bedrooms. Parents and children.
So, so B is valid.
Yeah, but you, you, you might take it out under the, because you've said elsewhere. That you can't have more than one party, but I just think this clarifies it. That it can't be to two different, two, two different rental parties can't. Do it on any short term rental property, you rent to one party at a time. And this is no exception.
Larry, I, I mean, I understand that point, but I think. Then the B is a little bit contradictory because if I, I'm renting a whole unit rental of a four bedroom house with one party. Then it conflicts with A. So I, I think that. So should be a, a whole unit part doesn't have A's restriction. So I think there's some terminology that needs to be fixed there.
That whole unit part of it.
Yeah.
I agree.
And my, my other comment is, is we have off street parking and given all the discussion we just had and that someplace else. I'm not sure it should be here.
Right.
It should be in the parking section.
Right. Agreed.
So we could take D out and we'd have to revise the wording of B. Anybody have a suggested set of words?
I, I think it's adding another thought that says if it's a whole unit rental. Restriction A does not apply. Somehow get that in there.
What does that mean?
That means that, that you can rent, that a whole you rental could be more than two rooms. Per, per dwelling.
Took out, I'm again, I'm B. What if we just took out? The part that says. And shall not be rented as separate bedrooms to separate parties, because you're already saying that you're renting it as a whole unit to one party. In that same.
Shall be rented. Shall not be rented as separate bedrooms to separate parties.
You could put it that, you know, you could put that as a second sentence and that number A, just forget that whole unit rental title. But just say no more than two rooms, maybe rented for dwelling plus a shared or private bathroom. Two bedrooms should not be rented to separate bedrooms to separate parties.
Two bedrooms. Shall not. Be rented. Two bedrooms shall not be rented. Bedrooms shall not be.
Yeah.
Rented to different parties.
Good, that's better.
Alright, no, no more than two rooms may be rented for dwelling plus a shared or private bathroom. Semi colon or whatever heck that thing is. Bedrooms shall not be rented to different parties.
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
I, I have another question.
Yep. Do with that first. So let's make sure we get the language right.
Maybe, it depends.
Okay, go ahead.
So. Again, what Nip was talking about before, like, you know, okay, I've got a house that has four bedrooms. And then it says, but only two of those rooms can be rented?
If you just confuse me with nip.
I mean, wasn't he talking of when we were talking about the parking, he was saying, oh, what if? You know, I have a house and it has four bedrooms and I come with my kids and my, you know. My adult children and myself and they take a room and I take a room and I have three adult children, blah, blah, blah. So then in that instance, you'd have a four bedroom rental. But A says no more than two rooms may be rented per dwelling. So.
I.
Am I missing something here?
No, it's contradictory. That was my point earlier.
Okay.
That there needs to be, you know, that, that if it's a whole unit rental. You know, the restriction A doesn't apply because you can have more than two rooms for precisely the reason you said.
Yeah.
I'm not following. This is, this is just for renting individual rooms, not an apartment or a whole house rental. It's just for.
But what if we took out A, like Larry was saying, take out A. Doesn't be with our, with our new language cover it because B just says. Bedsroom shall not be rented to separate parties. But here in, in the scenario like Nip was saying, that's all the same party. That's one party's rented this house, right?
No, but this is, this is, this is, that's what we're trying to do here is to replace the rooming house. Which is for individual room rentals. I thought that we were trying to bring that into the short term rental. Regulations instead of having the rooming, replacing those rooming house regulations by incorporating them into this. So it's addressing that aspect.
Here's what gets me confused on this thing. Elsewhere, we say only one rental per party. Here we're saying you could rent a room to John Doe and you can rent a different room to Jimmy Joe.
No, you can't.
Retitled then because it sounds very much like you can rent an individual room and then you can rent another individual room. And you really, it's not individual room. And that's what the boarding house rules are. You can rent an individual room and the guy next door to you is no relation to you and he's not in your rental party.
Right, and it's trying, and what it's trying to do is to change that, yeah.
Is that a good idea? Or should we just strike this section and say? Make this short term rentals. And if we have to change the rooming house regulations later. Actually, we should look and make sure there's not a conflict between what we do now and what exists already, but.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think trying to conflate the two is going to get confusing.
Yeah.
There're two, there's two sides. We have to, based upon this, if we got to go fix the rooming house one, to me, that's part two.
Yeah, and I, I gotta be honest with you. I mean, that rooming house regulation has been in our regulations since. The inception and, and really historically goes back a hundred years. I. I, I don't feel comfortable. Kind of trying to. To. To, to. Make it into something else. I don't know. I mean, I might if I, if I, this language here though just confuses me. I'm sorry. I understand what you're trying to do.
That's fine. And the, the rooming house, there were things in there that I thought. Needed to be updated and thought about and discussed. And it's a complicated one. It, it references all kinds of other. It references a Groton ordinance and the Groton ordinance has been changed. And so the pointers to it are, what we have in there is not exactly, probably correct. It's complicated. So.
I, I, I agree. Yeah, I don't know if you need a motion, Rick, but I.
I'm looking for one.
I, I make a motion to eliminate item nineteen.
Let's second it.
With the understanding that that might be the next order of business if we ever get this one done.
Correct, yes.
For sure.
Alright, motions made in second, who was it? Beth, was that you?
I seconded.
Seconded it.
Speak anymore.
Larry made the motion, Beth seconded it. Eliminate item nineteen in the concepts document. Okay. Discussion on the motion. With understanding. To address. Rooming house later. Okay, discussion on the, no discussion on the motion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, wave your hand. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Next item, application materials down below that. We're making pretty good time and I expect this is the last one on my list, but. I would suggest then we go back and kind of look at the earlier parts of this document and we can pick and choose. Things that need to be discussed and, and decided on, but I didn't have them set out in sequence. Okay, this is very much like the information to renters, but this is what they would bring to bill in order to get their permit. So read down through that and see what you think. Okay. Larry?
Yeah, I one comment in C. I think the intent. Is that it's not just conformance with rules of this section. But of all the zoning, I mean, it, you know, all the zoning rules.
I'm sorry, say that again. I got sidetracked there.
That, that item C, it, it states that it's rules and postings required by this section. And I think it's of the entire zoning.
Ah, yeah, okay.
Document, right?
Yep.
That, just to kind of make it.
Omit required by this section.
I just say with all zoning rules and. Required postings or something, whatever the right legal phrases.
Oh, we could just say to confirm compliance with all. Rules and postings.
Okay. I guess John could fix it if we need something.
Yeah, he's gonna. With all of this. So these are concepts. Lynn?
I know other places I've seen that the CEO, that they don't give them the twenty four hours notice. Because that gives people time to fix whatever the problem is or rearrange things. But what I wondered is. In our case, what is it we think that the zoning officer would be, zoning enforcement officer would be inspecting? And should, would that apply that, 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 you know, not having twenty four hours notice is a little intrusive? But, but if you're trying to. Find it, find something that's a problem, you may need to, to get in right away to, to inspect it. And that would be something I think would be worth asking Bill about.
Yeah.
What zoning officer needs twenty four hours to inspect? He doesn't. He just goes and.
I didn't have that in there. Somebody's individual plan in July had it, so I put it in. But.
Well, are we talking two different things? One is if there's a complaint, there is no notice required. I would agree. This says that, oh gee, for example. I've got my floor plan. So. It may be that the zoning officer goes in and says, is your floor plan correct? I mean, it's not, it, it, to me, it's not about a remedy of an issue. It's about compliance. To the fact that, or for example, it says there are play of health codes. Is there a fire i- in that bedroom? Is there a fire or a, you know, carbon monoxide? Unit or, or smoke detector or something. Those are in the regs, alright? You got to have that. So I think you want the authority to do it. Right, but not necessarily the obligation to do it. If there's a issue, a complaint, you don't need a notice. I think that's, that's a different, a different aspect. It's not an application material and inspection. To see that the material you gave us, in fact, represents what you actually have. That's, that's how I was reading this section.
Yeah.
I would agree, but I mean, I don't want to, I don't, I'm thinking maybe we take out with a minimum of twenty four hours notice. I mean, if the guy, if the, if the CEO wants to give twenty four hours notice time, why would we pigeonhole him? That he has to.
Well, I, I mean, I, for anything, I mean, because we're required to be inspected for a lot of stuff or let's say eventually, but. I, I don't know why it would be different than any other home inspection. I mean, I have. People asking for assessments to come in and look, but they schedule an appointment.
Sure, I, I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying, and, and I would think that. Yeah, the CEO would call and say, hey, I'd like to come over and schedule an appointment with you to come and check out compliance. I'm just saying. Why? Why put it? The time constraint in there. It's not saying that he, he can do it without giving them notice, but it's not.
Yeah, okay. I, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
You know?
I'm happy with.
I can see the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Uh, there's no motion yet. I will move that we adopt number three, application materials. With the following change that the parenthetical in C. With a minimum of twenty four hours notice, that parenthetical statement be omitted.
And also that. There he had.
Which was. Required by the section.
That comes out.
Also.
Yeah.
And, and to omit the required by this section. And omit. Okay, those two changes. Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second? Best seconds. Number three. Okay, alright. Any other debate on the motion?
Yeah, the, the one thing I think that they should also have. Assigned agreement. For the. Rental history to be audited.
Isn't that in the application itself? Part of the forms and.
Well, it's no different than B. So if you want to have that in there, it would be that same kind of language, a statement signed by the short term rental operator where he. Agrees to. A periodic audit of records. I don't know if that's what you're thinking of, but we could do that.
Depending on how we ultimately decide to audit those records, that might need a little more finessing, but that, I think is a placeholder. That would be good.
Well, in the records section, we have a requirement that they maintain records for a period of time. We'll look at the time. Later because there's no language in there. Do we also need an audit provision or do we need simply to say the owner has to maintain records of things that?
Oh, you may, you may be doing the audit through, through accessing what they have. And this is, this is, it should be the other issue first, but I mean, I think that's saying, just saying they need to keep the records. Well, guess what? Everybody isn't going to be honest about those records. And so the way you get at it is by going. Is by saying that they allow you to look on the websites where they are advertising. And to have, and they have to give you permission to, to go in there and look or a monitoring company to go in there and look. And see if they are indeed renting more than they're supposed to be doing.
Okay, let's look at the language. Larry? Okay, let's look at the language. Larry, could you scroll up and we'll get to records? And we'll see.
I don't. I don't know if that's. I think that that is not a private. Let's see, where where's this?
Uh, no, go back the other direction. Go slowly, because I need to find the word.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay, right, okay. So keep accurate records of the date, number persons, make them available upon request to the zoning enforcement officer and retain such records for the period of time specified by statutes. Falsifications or refusal to provide them grounds for permit revocation. So. What else? In addition to this, does an audit buy us?
In addition, that there's an audit, what?
What does it buy us? Why do we need an audit provision if we have this?
What you have here. Is what the short term rental operator is providing you, which may or may not be accurate.
Well, but it also says that, I mean, it's got it's.
No way of knowing whether or not it's accurate.
They have to give the. The zoning officer. And retain the records so we can see them after three, five, whatever number of years. And if they falsify them.
Then that's a problem.
All right, let me try. Make sure I understand what you're proposing here before I argue with it. You're suggesting that we hire an auditing firm to look at the records they provide to the CEO? Well, you're saying they could falsify him, and I say, yeah, but how are you going to disprove that? What's the difference with an audit versus the CEO getting the forms and saying? These guys haven't been keeping the records. We told them to keep. If they're gonna lie, they're gonna lie. And what's the audit gonna do? Is that gonna be a forensic audit?
The audit says, I give you permission. So this is what the monitoring companies do. They say, we're conducting an audit. We need your permission to look at. We know you advertise on these three sites. We need to look at your rental history on those sites.
But you have to pay the audit. You have to pay the. Third party company. To do that. And once you do that. They they get that data that the the renter doesn't authorize them. That data is public information. Pulled off of the Airbnb sites and all those other sites.
That at a training course, they said, no, that they could not pull that information off. So they they actually, because. What all they all they see. At the level you're talking about, Larry, you see. They they see. Is there? Do they have something on the calendar? Do they have open dates on the calendar now, or there's dates off the calendar? That's all they see.
Good. All right. So so what your suggestion is on seventeen to add. The fact that. That they authorize for this by asking for an app or part of the application submittal. They're authorizing us to get any and all information through any third party. Because they're gonna lie, so we got to get through any third party and we have that authorization. So somehow the legal phrase. Of that is it. I'm okay with that, because. You're not going to get it from them, because they're gonna. You're right, they could lie. I mean, so what differences am I? But the authorization to access those other records. There's no downside to that that I can see. But I think it's under seventeen, though.
Uh, we don't have. We do have a motion. Well.
We had motion for number nineteen.
Yeah, if you want to.
Number three.
Issue audit issue under seventeen, then we can just deal with the motion on item nineteen.
Right.
Okay, anything else on nineteen? Any other discussion on item nineteen? No. No, we're not. I'm sorry, not nineteen. Number three under D.
It was three. Yeah, you get you confused me. It was three. This is the one we're talking.
Motion. Application materials. Number three. Okay, so that was. The three, the two things we had were. Remove the 24 hour thing. And remove and remove the required by this section, both of those in C. And we're going to deal with Lynn's issue and under seventeen. Okay, that's the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay.
All right, now we go back to this one.
Let's go to seventeen. Yeah, we may as well.
Do that, knock it off. Yeah.
Okay, convince me or you don't get my vote. This one is. I'm I'm real big on writing regulations the way they need to be to control the thing we're concerned about. So don't get me wrong, I'm. My whole career was figure out how people are going to abuse a privilege and and write a regulation to control. The bad behavior. But this audit thing has has. I need some convincing that it's really necessary. And and then the question is, just for my vote, and then then the question is, what process do we do it by? Let me let me give you by example. The way it was written now. People keep their records. After three years, Bill says, well, after three years, we've had no complaints, so we don't need to see the records. Okay. Maybe we've had a few complaints, and maybe they didn't rise to the level of the commission pulling a permit. But we've had those complaints. And after a year or two of this going on, Bill says. Bring me your records, you know, because we said you you could rent every X number of times, or you couldn't go more than forty five days or whatever. And we've had complaints that suggest you did. Bring me your records. And the argument is. Maybe the records were. Falsified. And you have your suspicions, but you have no proof. What do you do?
That that's what I. No, not. That's what I threw this in. So that the SDR operator author authorizes our or the CZO. Access to any short term rental information from a third party to audit.
Okay.
What they just gave us.
So the zoning officer. Then is authorized to go to home away and. Get records from them.
Yes.
Mary to.
To to if that's the audit. I mean, that's the only way you can do it. I mean. I mean, unless unless a neighbor provides a certified information that so and so was, you know, on on this date, had a party and, you know, the other guy said.
The neighbor's not going to know if any money changed hands, and they don't know.
They'll make a right. They'll make a complaint, and then the CZO has got to go verify the complaint that which then go back to getting the records, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well. Now I understand. I will bet you. Twenty bucks. That knowing will never have. The staff. Ability. Inclination, ability, time, whatever. To go into this depth. I don't think this is where we're going to be enforcing short term regs. What we're going to hear is. A neighbor is going to come screaming to Bill's office Tuesday night and say. Those SOBs next door to me have rented one hundred and twenty times, and they've got twelve cars and five kegs of beer, and you got to do something. And by the way, here's all my cellphone video of five events. And we're going to say, huh, makes pretty good sense. That looks like a violation. Let's have it here. And we pull the permit. We don't.
Rick, I agree with you, but. But. It 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 it's like belt and suspenders again.
Well, yeah.
If we have the authorization to go grab the records, if we require, because the other guy says, that's incorrect. Here's my records. I did. I only rented it ten times. I didn't rent it one hundred and twenty done one hundred and twenty times. That guy's lying.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you can. You can then go into these records and just ask them, and they'll type it out. You don't have to investigate. They'll give us the records. The if we have a third party.
All right, and this doesn't mean everybody has to be subjected to it. It's if we decide we need to.
Yes, it's it only there if we. I would expect it to be used very rarely. Yes.
Right. Okay, change it to CEO.
What they say. Oh, Z CZO, okay. The CEO. There we go. Well, it's getting late.
Z E E O.
Oh, E O. Jesus, it is getting late. I don't know.
You're good at this computer stuff, but your typing stinks.
My typing stinks. That's my mental security.
Um, okay, so let's have a motion for that language. Include. Well, a motion for item seventeen has amended. Which would include that new language. I'll move item seventeen with the new language. Added. In addition, the SDR operator authorizes CEO access to any STR information from a third party to audit the STR records.
Second.
Okay, made by me, seconded by Lynn. Number seventeen with language. All right, discussion on the motion. Seeing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Scroll to the beginning of this, Larry. Let's just maybe take the rest of it and see. Well, yeah, next page, sequence. Okay, we kind of. We address that first yellow thing by. We're gonna try and put that language in in waiting periods. I'll. I'll deal with that as a drafting chore. Okay, next one is. Okay, we discussed this last time. We we mashed it around a little bit. I think it reflects what. Lynn's intent was with that.
Take it out now. It's not relevant. Be one fee, because we're not doing the one and two, but the one and two rooms.
Will never be single rooms rented other than as a short term. Yeah, okay, so we can do. Let's have a motion of that. No, let's just take it out. We already had a motion. Yeah, take that language out, Larry, the. That paragraph. You can't do it that. We got to mark it over to the left of that box.
It's the yellow, just the yellow thing.
Larry.
I can't. I can't get to it. All right.
Yeah, you can.
Yellow stuff.
Can put your. No, okay, there you go. All right. Yeah, you're gonna have to send me this so I can edit the master copy, so.
Yep, okay.
All right. Okay, next one, we that. We've seen that language. Tonight, and I don't think. The only additional thing in there, I don't know if this is a good idea or not. I would leave it for John to say. When we debated this a month ago, we talked about, you know, if we get sued over something like this and we prevail. We should have something that says the people who sued us have to pay the freight, our freight.
Isn't that isn't that standard contract law?
I don't know. I'm not an attorney. I couldn't tell you. I just figured I'd put it in. If John said, don't do it, we take it out. Lynn, Liz, Beth, is that common, normal?
The indemnification clause?
No, no, the last. The last sentence.
Legal fees. If you lose, you pay.
Yeah, well, I mean, the only way that you're getting attorney's fees in the state of Connecticut is by contractor statute. If this is the, this is really neither. I don't. But if I I don't know if our zoning reg, if our zoning statutes allow for this language. Then I would say you could put it in there, but if they don't.
All right, let's put it until John.
And he can always.
Okay, we'll leave it. Editing doc. All right, next item up is.
I mean, you could just thinking about it, you could also say by arbitration rather than lawsuit. That would cut the cost down.
No, no, it doesn't. Arbitration is so expensive.
You know what I'm going to want to do at the end of this before we send it to John? I'm going to want to have a meeting that we all look through this stuff after. Letting our mind settle a little bit and say, do we really need this? Do we really need this? And and try and pare this down, but I'm not prepared to do that now. It's just making this shorter and cleaner would be a real desirable thing for me. Lynn, by the way, had suggested something else, and I've already taken a crack at it and haven't shown it to anybody. Marrying the measures with the goals. To make sure we have a measure or more than one that addresses each goal. Uh, and that was a pretty interesting. Process, and it's actually fairly successful. I mean, most things. You know, have a match. In fact, maybe all. So someday I'll put it up on the website for all to see, and then we can work it out, but that's too soon also. This is that provision. Oh, we didn't talk about this tonight, but. One dwelling per property, unless they're both legal dwellings, and and one of them can be used as a rental, but not both of them. And if it's.
That we already agreed with that.
Yeah, we did. I'm just.
Oh.
Saying when. See, when we made motions or made decisions based on bullet text, to me, that's worthless. Now, it's not worthless. It shows our intent, but it doesn't show how the language would read. So I've tried to. Give a model piece of language. This is how it would read in a regulation. And if you want to change something, which we've been doing freely tonight, which is useful. This is how I would do it. And the accessory structure is the other thing. To be clear that, you know, Blake had mentioned the the garage apartment. Well. The fact is, that's an illegal dwelling. But there's a time honored tradition in knowing that when your family comes and you got your bedroom. Made in your half of your garage is a bedroom, maybe doesn't even have a bathroom, because the kids come in the house to use the bathroom in the house. Certainly doesn't have a kitchen. Those are not legal structures. This is to be clear that, you know, your family may stay there because you want them to, but you aren't renting that as a short term rental.
Right, you can't make it a business.
Yep, yeah. You can't even make it a legal rental.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see.
You did. We did.
I'm gonna have to take that out. Whoop, go back up. Because we just changed that inspection. Subject to inspection by the zoning law. We take out the four hours. Okay. Yep. Okay. We did information, record keeping, we did parking, we did. Room rentals, we took out. Permit application requirements. Yeah. Yeah, okay. It's worth reading a little slowly. The first one just says, you got to have a permit, and you got to put all the information in. And if it's provided. Properly to the CEO, he has to. He shall issue the permit. No judgment call. If you meet all the rules. You. You get your permit. The corporate ownership, I've just said necessary, but we got to leave that for John to basically. We need to tee that up for him to understand it, but.
Yeah.
You know, I I don't think we can answer that, and I don't think we should take time trying to. Lynn?
I just put up the the point of it, because what we have in there, we say that. Any, the way it reads right now is any single person. Can have only one short term rental, one per person. So in talk, when I was talking to other planning and zoning departments, other places around the country. I found out that. That the issue you get into, there are there are two, there are two things that happen, the way people get around that. One is if you have a family, so. Say dad, mom, and and two children. Dad puts one short term rental in his name, one in his wife's name, one in each child's name, so he's got four. So that and that was, that happens not infrequently. And then the other one is you put it in an LLC. So say I want to have five short term rentals. I have one under my name, and then I will have four under the name of an LLC. And so now I have five. And and in order for you to actually look and see who who are the, and this isn't the right name, Beth helped me out, of who are the. The primary owner, primary business partners in that LLC. You've got to look at the document, and then you would have to look at that. You've got to look at the document and then you would have to look at that annually. And what's the planning and zoning department's found out that that was a lot of work to do, have to do that annually to check it. So they just thought it was much simpler to just not allow that at all. Because after all, these are residences, not businesses that are being rented out.
So in your view, after talking to the people you've talked to, is the language there appropriate for the thing you're concerned about?
I think that was what I lifted from, from one of those, one of those.
Okay, but we don't have a provision anywhere in here that says anything about corporate ownership. So we're gonna.
Yeah, so, so, so I'm just saying what we need is a way to say, uh, to, to say that there can only be a, a single owner. And when we say it, each person can have one, what's a person? Is that a person or is that a household? Unit? You know, I think that needs more clarification and more definition and, uh, and a, and a good way to uh, prevent people from abusing that.
Yeah.
Getting around.
Well, that's gonna take some, you know, that's gonna take some legal drafting because, right? Yeah, the Supreme Court has said that a corporation is a person. So I, you know, I.
Yeah.
So that one's tricky. I understand your point, Lynn, that, you know, I don't know what the proper language would be to make it enforceable. Yeah.
I understand, I think, the purpose, but I want to make sure we understand the need. It bugs me when somebody gets around a regulation, I wrote. I get that. So if mom has a permit and dad has a permit and each kid has a permit, yeah, they got four permits. So what? The blade.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think you could stop that. I think what you can stop is that, that for instance, if I'm doing it, I can't, I don't set up an LLC and I'm the sole owner. Now I have two, but it's under quote, two legally different people, right? I, I thought that's what, that's what you're trying to avoid. If, if I buy a house and my son buys a house, you know, how do you stop that? I mean, I have that situation, right? My son has a house and I have a house. We both rented to some people.
Is your son, is your house his prime, his primary residence? Does he live with you?
No.
Well, that's different. I mean, and, and.
I agree.
Yeah, so these other places, they actually, this went along with a primary residence requirement. So that's why they could, that made it actually easier for them to, um, get out that.
Here's, here's some language again, because I was looking at that Shelter Island line. That any legal entity other than a natural person, including but not limited to a corporation, LLC, trust or partnership, may not be issued a vacation rental license on Shelter Island if any owner, partner, member, settler, trustee, beneficiary, shareholder, officer or director of that entity already holds or has applied for a vacation rental license for another property. And then there's a section about corporate disclosure saying that any partnership, trust, LLC or corporate applicant for a vacation rental license must provide documentation, this same language that you now have.
Right, right. I, I, as you read, I said, oh, look at that. That must be.
That's a little more complete than this language.
Yeah, so I think it's just, maybe this language is just missing that first part that I just read to make it holistic.
Okay, so you're gonna send me that language?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll put that in. It still needs John's review, so we don't have to pass a motion on it. We just need a model for him to know what we're thinking of. Let me make sure I understand the purpose. We want to avoid commercial business entities owning multiple residences doing short-term rentals. I think that's good for knowing. All right, is that kind of the sense of it?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. All right, uh, next one up, uh, item four. Uh, that's fairly, we've had that in there forever. It just says, once you get a permit, you have to notify your neighbors that you have a permit and you have, are providing them contact information for the agents and for the owner. And you have to prove it like we do in zoning rules throughout our book, evidence of mailing, post office certificates of mailing. That's the obligation of the owner within twenty-one days. And I added, if the operator fails to complete this action, the permit shall be revoked without notice. I don't know if John will say we can do that, but there's two types of violations. There's one that is in the eye of the beholder and the owner's gonna say one thing and the complainant is gonna say another and we'll have to have a hearing according to the rules and the general statutes and that's fine. But there are other things where it's black and white. You, you have to do A, and if you don't do it, and in this case, if you fail to complete this action, which means in twenty-one days, you haven't given the zoning officer the, the receipts, there's no arguable point. Your permit is revoked. That's a strategy. Again, objectively for you. Anybody disagree with that? Because I've used that approach and a couple of other ones in here where it's been a clear-cut issue. All right. Next one is, um, duration of permit. Um, the only variable here is, um, you want to issue a permit for a calendar year or do you want to issue it for three hundred and sixty-five days? You do a calendar year, it's easier conceptually to know, but you, you, it's a lot of, a lot of administrative work. Let's say there are thirty of these permits and knowing, or five years from now, fifty. That's a lot of permits to renew all at the same time in December sometime. If you do it on a calendar year basis, maybe you have some in March, some in April, some in May, some in June. It's spread out, but then the zoning officer and his large staff have to keep track of all of this stuff. So it's two ways of doing it. I, I have a preference, but I want to hear what people think.
Well, I, I mean, from my view, I'm okay with two years. But.
But the issue, it's the duration right now.
Yeah, the fee would have to be commensurate with that because if, if we gotta recover funds for administration.
Yeah.
You know, then it's gonna be a bigger fee.
That's the next issue. This is number five.
Okay.
Calendar year permit or three hundred and sixty-five days?
For three sixty-five.
Anybody else?
I, I mean, I don't know. You, you know, it's like bad example, I think it's like dog licenses, July of every year. I mean, there's something to be said to have it on a certain time period, you know, like March of, you know, March of every, so it all comes in, you get it done and you're over with it versus like you said, now I get, now who's gonna check every month whether something came up or not, right, for renewal? I, I think it would be easier to administer if it was on a consistent time period. And so it's not a year, not a year. It's just when you, when you, maybe when you do it. So it's not whenever you do it. It's, it's, most of these short-term rentals are gonna be for the, for the, the season, isn't it? Aren't they?
Yeah, I, I mean, and this doesn't mean a person has to apply at a specific time. In fact, somewhere here I talk about, yeah, number seven. Operator must reapply thirty days prior to the first date of rental and the next permit period. So he doesn't even have to get it at the end of a year. He just has to have it in hand before he starts renting the next time.
Renting it. That's okay. So you're really getting, you're getting the money, you're getting the thing. It's for a specific time period, but, but it's regular, so.
Yeah.
He would have to do it, I don't know, by March of every year. And then if he wants to do it later, he can. But now he's only gonna get it the next March. I mean, he's gonna lose that, you know, that time period.
All right. Arguing for a calendar year then, right?
I, I, yeah, or, or, or you could pick any specific days, you know, kind of like an accounting calendar. Companies have different accounting calendars. They're not always at calendar years, right? Some are March, some are June, some are whatever. So you, you pick it and you say that's, that's when you do it, but it's for that, a year, for a year. And then rather than whenever you come in, we'll try and track. I'm just trying to, again, minimize tracking issues.
Yeah, that's the problem I have with three hundred and sixty-five days because you tend to forget and miss things. Uh, but calendar year creates a workload bottleneck. So there's a good reason for both approaches and I don't know which way I prefer, just, uh, Lynn?
Well, again, if we have a third party helping us with it, they handle most of that application process. And they just, they said, they'll take it and say everything's complete. And then send the package to the CEO and say, we think it's complete. Ready for your review and sign off or.
You're envisioning a, an app-based monitoring company doing our permitting for us as well?
Well, it's part of the package.
Interesting.
I mean, you get, you get a number of things in the base, number of functions in the base fee. You know, you, you, you know, you gotta help that function in there. I mean, so there's a number of things you get there, which, I mean, when Lynn and I looked at it, that was the cheapest way to do it. Otherwise, we'd have to pay somebody a lot more money uh, than, than a, uh, a third party that charges by the property. And then you get the, you get compensated by permit fees by the property. So it matches up. I mean, it, it does make it more straightforward. We didn't, we didn't get to that aspect of it, of providing all, you know, here's all the things you can do. But I guess, like I said, Lynn and I kind of looked at it in detail and, you know, I think that's probably gonna be the most cost-effective, easiest approach.
Okay, let's, let's finish up item five and then stop because it's just till after nine and I'm.
It's nine oh two.
You've given me in the past to not go more than two hours. So just what's your pleasure, calendar year or three sixty-five? Just shout it out. Beth said three sixty-five.
Calendar.
Calendar.
Two for calendar, one for, actually, I'd go calendar two. So, okay, calendar. Don't need a motion, just call it three to one. Uh, because we'll probably change it again. Okay. Actually, it was pretty productive. Scroll down quick, Larry, and just see what else we have. We have renewal, applicant, transferability. We're gonna, that's out of there, but I'll do that later. That'll remind me to do it. And then just those, we can do that next meeting. That's not a big deal. So that's kind of most of the major decisions. So I'll try and write this up and have it in a, a document like this so we can read it again over the next couple of weeks, or we might not even talk about short-term rentals at our November seventeenth meeting. Because we have three applications for design review. And that is a meeting that we will have election for vice chairman because our bylaws uh, that we, uh, voted on in two thousand and fourteen were, the chairman serves a two-year term. November meeting to two years later, vice chairman serves a one-year term, November to November. So, uh, the vice chairmanship is up again. So that's another thing on the agenda. Probably won't take too long, but then we have FEMA. Some discussion on FEMA also, and we have Q and As for, and we'll have Bill there for that. So that'll take us some time. So we might not have much time. Maybe we'll deal with that last issue, the, the permit periods and things like that. But this will give me some time to to put all of this together and, and look at it as a staff draft. So next meeting is November seventeenth. It's a regular meeting. It's Tuesday, back to Tuesday. And I'll be getting the information out to you. It'll be Zoom and, and we're gonna see all that application material on, on the screen. But also, within the next few days, I'm gonna have all of the big documents for these proposals in your mail slots at the firehouse. So, uh, I'll email you when it's available to be picked up. We'll see it on the screen that night. Uh, but if you want to look at it spread out in front of you, you'll have the opportunity to do that.
You already have the invite for that meeting for Zoom, right, Rick?
I believe I do. I think you did both of them for November at the same time.
Right.
I'll, I'll double check that tomorrow, though. All right, in that case. No other business. Somebody move to adjourn. Larry.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Beth, and the happiest motion I've ever seen passed. All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you all, appreciate it. Good night. All right, so you're gonna do that document, ship it to me. No big rush, tomorrow's fine.
You already got it.
Oh, is that right?
It's already in your in basket.
Uh, you're good, man. You're good. All right. So we're not recording, oh, stop recording. We're done with that.
Shoot, I'm sorry. Stop recording.